I'm Ben Vereen and you're watching CITV. CI TV.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening to the November 16th meeting of the Colonial School Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Christian, I, oh, wait a minute. I'd like to announce that the board met an executive session on November 13th to discuss an administrative vacancy. That meeting lasted about 30 minutes. We also met an executive session for an hour prior to this meeting, discussed the hiring of six new employees and issues related to a union contract. And now we have Dr. Christian recognition.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. We have two of our teams here tonight celebrating their championships. We'd like to welcome our girls volleyball team and head coach Seeley Beiler, as well as our field hockey team and head coach Sharice Holtman. We will do volleyball first. Coach Beiler, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Christian, and the Colonial School Board members. Before Casey and I recognize the achievements of this great group of girls, we wanted to let you know how appreciative we were this year of all your support from the board, from Dr. Christian, and the entire Colonial community. So, thank you. The 2017 varsity volleyball team finished 17-1 in the SOL Continental Conference season en route to a 20-3 overall record and a consecutive Continental Conference crown. I would now like to recognize the girls individually of the 2017 varsity volleyball team. Senior manager Caitlin Duff. Senior manager Quinn Watten. Freshman Asia Smith. Freshman Julia Walker. Sophomore Bree Middleton. Sophomore Zdray Tencinco. Junior Lily Acoviva, who was named to the Suburban One Continental Conference First Junior Jillian Connor, who was named Honorable Mention List of the Suburban One Continental
My name is Sharice Holtman, head coach of the PW Field Hockey Team.
Conference Team.
Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to share a little bit about our season and
Junior Allison Helferty.
for the opportunity to introduce you to our exceptional student athletes.
Junior Sidney Malillo.
The PW Field Hockey season began on August 14th when over 40 girls showed up to preseason
Junior Megan Puser, who was named to the Suburban One Continental Conference Third Team.
practices. The team was led by 10 senior athletes, and as the weeks passed, it was evident that
Senior Kaylee Branagh.
the team was well on its way to achieving the goals that had been set in the early stages
Senior Annie Macio.
of the season. The team started out the season with seven wins and zero losses, earning Team of the
And our three senior captains.
Week honors from Philofieldhockey.com before losing our first game in overtime to Haverford.
Senior captain Bridget McTamney, who was named to the Suburban One Conference All-League First Team.
The team picked up right where it left off, winning another seven games in a row.
Senior captain Taylor O'Brien, who was also named to the Suburban One Continental Conference
We would finish the regular season with a record of 16-2.
All-League First Team.
On the way to achieving this impressive record, the team won the Suburban One American League
And our last senior captain Emily Walts, who was named to the Suburban One Continental
Championship, going undefeated in league play without a single goal scored against us.
Conference All-League Third Team but was not able to join us tonight.
For the season, the PW Field Hockey Team scored 87 goals and only allowed 11, and recorded
Thank you so much for this recognition.
an impressive 15 shutouts. In addition, nine athletes were named to the All-League roster, and seniors Jess Dixon and Sophie Colka will represent our team at the Philly Hockey Senior All-Star Game this Sunday. The success on the field earned the team the sixth seed and a first-round bye in home game in District One playoffs. Our team would lose in the second round to North Penn High School by a score of 5-4 in a competitive back-and-forth contest. Although our season ended sooner than we had planned, our coaching staff is genuinely honored to work with such talented and hard-working young women on a regular basis. Each day, the athletes showed up to practices and games proud to represent the PW community with integrity and class. Many of these young women here tonight are not just field hockey players, but high-achieving students in the classroom, in their volunteer activities, and in other sports here at PW. Our coaching staff, including my assistants Amanda Anderson and Jennifer Bratman, are very proud of their commitment to the program, and we are pleased to introduce them to you tonight. First, our senior captains Sophie Colka, Michelle McGrath, and Gia Schweitzer. Our sophomores Jess Bendel, Jess Dixon, Julia Fiddler, Katherine Houghton. Junior captain Kennedy Reardon. And juniors Jennifer Byrne, Megan De Giacomo, and Sam Spira. Our sophomores Jess Frangiosa, Autumn Luptak, Alexis Minor, Livia Trong. And our freshmen Ava Borkowski and Kaylee Missmurr. Thank you so much for inviting us tonight.
The amount of girl power in this room right now. I like, I'm teary-eyed right now. I'm so proud of all of you. Absolutely awesome. Girls rule!
Time to ask for someone to make a motion for the approval of the minutes from the curriculum meeting of September 18th, Facilities Management and Transportation Committee meeting of September 27th, Curriculum Committee meeting of October 16th, General Session Meeting of October 17th, FMT Meeting of October 30th, and Community Relations and Student Life of November 13th. Those are enclosures 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 38. Is there a motion to approve? Beth, second. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor? Thank you. I'd like a motion for approval of the financial reports. They include budget transfers, Capital Reserve Fund, Food Service Bills and Cafeteria Report, Outstanding Investment Report, Cash Flow Summary, Comparison of Taxes Collected, Real Estate Tax Escrow Report, Trust Fund, Reconciliation of Cash Accounts, Budgetary Deficit Status Report, Bond Fund, and the October Treasurer's Report. And those are enclosures 6 through 17. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Now is the time that we ask for public comments on tonight's agenda. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. Staff report. Dr. Christian.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. I thought it would be nice for the board to see all the wonderful events that took place last Friday in honor of Veterans Day. So, Mr. Sherman's going to help us out. We have some photos to show the board and our community. So, last Friday, throughout the district, Colonial took the opportunity to honor its veterans. At Ridge Park, we welcomed veterans with breakfast, and after breakfast, they received an envelope that included discounted tickets for meals and other things in the community along with that little mint. And then finally, they went to a school assembly where the students sang patriotic songs. Over at Plymouth Elementary, where I attended, I saw their wonderful Heroes, Veterans, and First Responders concert. So, the second grade does this annually. Tracy O'Shea leads them, so you can see by the throng of students dressed in a variety of costumes to, out of respect for our armed services and our first responders. I think the PE, as you move forward, the PE students, they learned 14 or, almost 14 or 15 different songs in advance of this assembly. I'm pretty happy if my fourth grader can learn about four or five before his first concert. So, the kids and Mrs. O'Shea did a phenomenal job. Over at White Marsh Elementary School, they had a school-wide assembly that included our veterans, and they took a class picture that's very similar to the picture that you see adorning the hallways in all of our elementary schools. The White Marsh veterans visited classrooms, shared stories, shared memorabilia, and fielded questions from our students. Seated with our students there is Mr. Richard Wormuth. The day concluded at White Marsh with a wonderful donation by Mission Barbecue, and that's Mr. Gerald Matson with his granddaughter, and he's one of our veterans. So, great day over at White Marsh. At the high school, we had about a dozen veterans visit. Mr. Culp put together a presentation for the vets to come visit our school, and as the next slide indicates, students got a firsthand history lesson, and that's two of our students sitting with 94-year-old Ed Sostic, and he was sharing his stories of being a veteran. Those are students in Mr. Culp's class, and that was a really nice opportunity to bring history to life. Mr. Sostic, I believe, was in Iwo Jima, as a matter of fact. So, we also had a Plymouth-White Marsh grad, Sergeant Major Walter Balkowicz is there, talking with students about his service. I know he toured Kosovo amongst other places in his service, and he presented the administration, Mr. Culp, with a flag that flew over the camps in Kosovo and Iraq. And so, that, our administrative team and Mr. Culp were there with the sergeant. We also have employees that are veterans. At Conchacan Elementary School, Mr. Hess went there and met with students. And we also, in White Marsh, our school nurse, Shereen Claretts, also celebrated the day. And finally, Veterans Day also celebrates the anniversary of the Marine Corps, so it was the 242nd anniversary. Pictured there is Mr. Sostic, who was in a previous one, and he is the oldest vet that was there, and our youngest veteran, Alex Griffin, who's also a 2011 Plymouth-White Marsh grad, was there. And that was, the cake was donated by Mission Barbecue again, and that's a celebration where the oldest vet shares a slice of the cake with the youngest vet that's present. So, and that was with all of our students. So, it was really a wonderful day for the kids, not only to show their respect and honor for those who have served our country, but to make it a teachable moment. So, I thank all of our teachers and our administrative staff who put that day together. It was hard. One of the challenges is, because I was invited to all of them, is everybody seemed to have their assembly between 9:30 and 10:30, so, which is a bit of a challenge. But it was really a very heartwarming day and well-deserved day for our veterans. That concludes our staff report.
That was great to see. I was at White Marsh, and that was really, really cool, and I'm sorry I missed the others, but like you said, you can't be everywhere at once, but very exciting stuff. Correspondence. Board approval is requested to accept a check for $1,000 from the Pennsylvania Library Association for the 2017 Best Practices Award for STEM programming for our Open Minds competition, and that's in enclosure 18, and I'm looking for a motion to approve that check. Beth, second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Superintendent's report. Dr. Christian.
Thank you. The personnel report and extra duty and extra pay enclosures are included in your packet. Board action is requested regarding the enclosed personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification, documentation, and state mandated requirements.
Is there a motion to approve? Felix, second? Kathy? Any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? All in favor? Board student representatives.
So, the past month of October has been very eventful at Plymouth-White Marsh. We just got over homecoming, so some of the biggest things we had were Wing Night, where Brad Kunicke ended up eating 36 wings. Our homecoming court Queen and King were just crowned, Nikki Elvins and Alex Chin. And then the dance went amazing. Our senior steering committee really went all out with decorations, and during the days, all the kids really dressed to the T. And then lastly, or not lastly, also, Interact Club is planning a field trip for Christmas time, where they are going to be working with Salvation Army at Norristown to help deliver presents to families.
So, NHS National Honor Society induction is this Tuesday, and this past Thursday, four PW athletes were committed to their colleges, so they, Taylor O'Brien to Bucknell and Ally Diamond to Georgetown, and two others as well. And so, that was really exciting as well. Yeah, and that concludes our report.
Thank you very much. New business, trips. Kathy?
Yes. Can I take these all together?
You sure can.
Wonderful. Okay. PW High School baseball team would like to travel to Vero Beach, Florida for training during spring break, March 24th to the 29th, 2018. There is no cost to the district. That's enclosure 21. Also, a motion to approve the trip for the PW High School girls lacrosse team to travel to Cocoa, Florida for training during spring break, March 24th to 29th. There's no cost to the district. That's enclosure 22. PW High School Ski and Snowboarding Club to travel to Stratton, Vermont from January 5th to the 7th, 2018, and Killington, Vermont from February 23rd to the 25th. There is no cost to the district. That is enclosure 23. PW High School cheerleaders would like to attend the PIAA State Championship Competition in Hershey, Pennsylvania from January 18th to the 21st, 2018, and the UCA Nationals Competition in Orlando, Florida from February 9th to the 13th, 2018. There is no cost to the district. That is enclosure 24. Avid students, 11th and 12th grade, would like to visit Penn State University, Elmira College, and Mansfield University on November 9th and 10th in 2017. This is post-approval. That's enclosure 25. And lastly, the PW High School students from Mr. Young's astronomy class would like to visit the Hayden Planetarium in New York on January 5th, 2018. That is enclosure 26. So, those are all motions?
Do we have a second to Kathy's motion? Any questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Can I just go back?
Sure.
I just feel badly because we mentioned two kids, but we didn't mention the other two, and I just, I know who the other girls are, so it's first girl power and sports continuing. It's also Sophie Colka and Victoria Betterly, and they're both going for lacrosse. I don't want to leave them out. That's okay.
All right. Board policy changes, Kathy?
Yes. It's a motion to approve the proposed changes to Board Policy 220 for student wellness, and this is on a second-read basis. So, that is a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor? All right. Kathy, and the second one?
Yes. Motion for the addition of Board Policy Number 808.1, which is School Lunch and Breakfast Program, Charged Meal, is presented to the board for approval on a second-read basis. This is in enclosure 28. I'll make, get it on the floor. Make a motion.
Is there a second? Comments?
Yes. So, Dr. Christian, would you like to address the changes?
Absolutely. So, between the first reading and tonight's second reading, legislation was passed in Pennsylvania related to this policy. And while this policy is written well, there's an element in there that says under, for middle school and high school students, that our cashiers will inform the students when their balances are low. And under the new legislative, under the new law, pardon me, that's known as the shaming policy, Act 55, the cashiers should be informing the parent, not the student. So, my request would be for the board to provisionally approve this. However, we will need to amend the policy in accordance with the new legislation. That way, we can move forward. We will make the change tomorrow before we post it to the website, and then I will bring it back as an informational item at the first business meeting of the new year.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're, the motion then, Kathy, is for this policy with changes added and the amendment, necessary amendment to make it fit with the new law?
Sounds good.
All right. And we had a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Felix, contract approval.
All right. Making a motion for contract approvals. Number one, Andrew Bogley, Director of Technology, requests board approval for the filing agreements and addendums. A, School Dude for managing the district facility calendars.
I can't not giggle.
Say that again. School Dude?
School Dude.
I know.
Way to go. B, Pearson Realize Online Student Digital Resources, and that is in enclosure 30. Should I read the second part here? Okay. And then number two, the administration seeks board approval of a contract with PSBA to provide policy development services. Excellent. So, and that is enclosure 31.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? 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 Any questions or comments?
December eleventh, and we can't wait, and we're looking forward to having you onboard, so thank you very much for coming tonight. Financial reports, Kathy?
Dee.
Oh, Dee, I'm sorry, I crossed it out. Bus driver approval, that's Felix again.
Contracted bus driver's approval, Kathy Ellis, Director of Transportation, requests approval of school bus drivers employed by First Student and Philly Trans for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, and that is enclosure thirty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, now we're on to you, Kathy.
Thank you. The financial reports and the treasurer's reports have previously been approved through October thirty-first. Board authorization is requested to pay November bills during December. November financial reports will be provided for formal action at the January business meeting, and that's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? Okay. F, Teamsters Negotiation Contract Mel.
Yes, the administration recommends the ratification of the agreement between the Colonial School Board of Directors and Teamsters Local Union Number three-eighty-four, effective July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. It was a very good negotiation, very amicable, and both sides were very well satisfied, so I recommend approval of the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor? And I'd like to add on to what Mel said, and just thank the Teamsters Union for such a productive negotiations, and I think this is a great, a great plan that we're continuing. Solicitors' report.
I'm doing this report for Beth Sutcliffe, who chains me on a regular basis that I don't have a regular solicitor's report.
Thank you.
And this is a, an atypical solicitor's report, because speaking of female power, my partner, Wendy Rothstein, who is a lifelong Plymouth Township resident, former counsel for this district, who handled many of our many assessment appeals, former secretary of the Montgomery County Bar Association, was just elected as Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas Judge, and she'll assume those responsibilities in January, but because we're in the Colonial School District, a district that she holds very fondly, and her daughter went to this district, that I felt that it would be very appropriate to mention that in an evening honoring the success of women in this district.
And I'd like to add that Wendy was a Plymouth White Marsh graduate and?
Yes.
A member of our distinguished graduates organization.
So, last but not least, of course.
Thank you.
So, thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay. Committee reports. Leslie, intermediate unit?
Yes, thank you, Sue. The Montgomery County Intermediate Board of Directors met last night at our old building on sixteen-oh-five West Main Street in Norristown. That was vacant for a few years when we moved to our new building in Norristown, and now is a thriving early learning academy, with ten Head Start classrooms and ten pre-K counts classrooms. So, we're thrilled about the activity that goes on there. However, we're facing some major renovation that needs to be done in that building, and so we'll be looking over that for the next several months to see what we need, roofs and heating and everything, really, the whole works has to be done in that building, so that's going to be a challenge coming up. But we want to keep that going because we plan to expand Head Start and pre-K counts in that building, so that's something we have to look forward to. And also, due to the election, forty percent of our board turned over, so that's also a challenge coming up at the same time that we have to do this renovation, so we have quite a few people who are changing out, and we look forward to bringing our newbies in and getting them up to speed. And that concludes our report, thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Very briefly, from the tech school, and Dave will be glad to hear this, we will be receiving a reimbursement of three hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
Which will go towards the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, because of successful enrollments at the tech school.
Great.
That's my report.
Okay, HR, Mel?
No.
Okay, Felix, finance. Curriculum, Leslie?
Yes, I just want to say a couple of quick things. We had a curriculum meeting this last Monday, where we talked a little bit about the outgoing school performance profile that we've all been looking at for the last few years, which was a, like a measurement, a score of our schools, we want to say, to compare schools, and it really is inadequate, insufficient to compare schools. So, the PD has decided to introduce something new next year called the school, it's called the Future Ready PA Index, which emphasizes more career exploration and readiness for after secondary school. We think that's, promises to be a better measurement of how our schools do. It, just to briefly say that it covers more career exposure for children in K through twelve, as we see what the workforce might be, we don't actually really know what's going to happen in five to ten years from now, but as we expect those jobs to come out, we want to expose our kids to that, so they can start thinking about it even as early as the elementary grades. Also, our colonial goals toward that, it's a long title, the Future Ready PA Index, includes having more opportunities for apprenticeships and internships for our students, also improves alignment of K through twelve with workforce pathways that may be coming up in the future, and it expands partnerships with our local labor market. So, we're very ready for that, and we're going to get right ahead of it, and I think it's going to be good for our school and for the state, better than the old school profile. And that concludes our report, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Facilities Management Transportation, Beth?
Yes, so, just when you thought Facilities was going to get a break, we've had two meetings this month, actually. As some of you may recall, and we've reported, we had Montgomery County, I guess IU, come in a couple of years ago and do a student population growth for us, and we've been slowly gearing up to get our classroom, not slowly, we added classrooms onto two elementary schools last year to get ready. But this month, we had two meetings, one in which we reviewed the report, and it looks like kids are coming in a little sooner than even the report expected, and so, we directed Facilities to go ahead and work with our architects, to start to give us some plans and some ideas on how we might make changes to the middle school and the four or five school to get ready for that. We had a really good discussion again tonight, looking at some draft blueprints to get, to look at that, and went for some more ideas, all very general right now, nothing specific decided, but we're going to have a lot of work to do, and they're getting ready, and I encourage the public to come and listen, because it's going to affect a large part of our population, and that's probably what you're going to be working on a lot on this year. That's my report.
Great news, we were afraid our Facilities people would get bored.
Nope, they will not be bored.
All right, community relations and student life, Kathy?
Yes, I don't have a ton to report, but it is sort of exciting that all of our schools now are social media savvy, so, if you got, if you love your iPhones and getting your updates, they're on Instagram, Twitter, I don't think they're Snapchatting, I hope they're not. But anyway, so feel free to follow all of the schools, some of the schools, to stay updated, and obviously, Facebook as well. And the only other thing I wanted to talk about is this weekend is, I hope they didn't say it, is the fall production for the high school, almost main. Are there still tickets available, Mr. Sherman, do you know? I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize.
I do not, but I'm willing to bet that there are.
Okay, so, go to the show, I've heard wonderful things about it, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Sticking with you, do you have a legislative report?
No.
Okay, anything from municipal and community liaisons? Nope? Okay, now is the time where we put aside for questions or comments from the floor. Are there any questions? Or does anyone like to make a statement? Please come up. Come up to the podium, please, and just tell us your name and where you live.
Hi, I am Norrie McAlister, I live in Concha Hocken. This is Tanya Silverelli, we are the co-presidents of?
Concha Hocken Elementary.
PTO. So, we just wanted to come tonight and ask a couple of questions about addendum number fif, nineteen it was, correct?
Yes.
We've had three principals in two years, well, Mrs. Marx is back again, so we just wanted to, we were wondering what was going to happen with the FLMA, with Dr. Bogley, how long that can be extended, how long she was going to be out, and who would be?
Her replacement.
Working for her in the interim or her replacement, if you guys had any input on that.
Okay, we can say that it's, it's right now a little premature to speculate about how long the leave will be, and we will be certain that our administration will give the community, the school community, as much notice as possible as the district receives that notice. Luckily, right now, we have Mrs. Marx to fill in there, and she can stay as long as needed. So, I know that's not a lot of information, but at this point, that's, that's really the best, it's a personnel decision, issue, and we really can't get into anything more, but that's, that's what we can tell you right now.
That's good to hear, that part of it.
Okay, yeah, but?
And then we just saw, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, no, go ahead.
And then we just saw tonight we have another teacher leaving, which is, I understand she's resigning, but these kids, the structure, they really, I have a second grader right now, and rules have changed with each, each principal, now she's going to have another teacher coming in in January, so everything's going to change for her again. I think there's just some, some people, me, including me leading it here tonight, that are just concerned. We just feel, there's, you know, children thrive in structure, and we're just?
And I think we understand that and appreciate your concern, I'm sure Mrs. Marx is doing a good job of just keeping the ship moving, and at this point, that's really all we can, that's all we can tell you, but we will be keeping you informed as we know anything, or the administration will.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for speaking. Are there any other comments from the floor? Okay, we have one more thing before we're done here this evening, and this is a tough one. Mr. Brodsky?
Thank you. I've always felt that school board members are pretty invisible. Last week, I was helping out at the polls, and a woman left after, I did not know her, left after, on her way out, stopped me and said, "I want to thank you for your service" to the board, and she left. Well, that really caught me by surprise, and all my time on the board, that's the first time that happened. Most people have no realization, and that's okay, to school board, excuse me, school board members receive no salary, no allowances, no perks, no material satisfaction. There are hundreds and hundreds of hours of meetings, pre-meetings, post-meetings, post-post meetings, PTA meetings, faculty meetings, back-to-school nights, concerts, events, thousands of emails and phone calls, and on and on and on. But the one satisfaction that makes it worthwhile is knowing that you've done the best you can for the kids, the community, and the staff. Beth, Kathy, Alan in Washington, Bernie. When you first became members of the board in two thousand nine, we were a nice suburban school district with great sports teams, terrific shows, average standardized scores, aging badly school buildings, facilities, and average budget management. Today, eight years later, nothing about us is average. Our curriculum and teaching methods are studied and replicated by districts throughout the state, and applauded by local, state, and national publications. Our budget management keeps us as the third lowest tax burden district in the county, and yes, we still have outstanding sports and arts programs. It's been my personal pleasure to get to know all of you personally, it's been an honor to work with you professionally. I never saw a vote during all this time where I became, before we, egos were suspended, and always the concerns of what's best for the kids. So, I thank you for your service. You will be a very tough act to follow.
I'd also like to take a couple of minutes and thank each of you individually, all of you, for whom tonight's meeting will be your last meeting as a board member. Gary, it was wonderful to have you back with us, even if it was for a short time. You are always thoughtful and respectful to everyone around you, and your love of Colonial School District shines through. Thank you for filling in for Alan and helping us out these last few months, and we have a little something for you. You already got your?
Again?
You don't get two of those at suburban phone calls. Bernie's not here tonight, but for eight years, Bernie's served on this board, and his understanding of facilities and his knowledge of the budget, every line of it, has been very important, and his dedication to the Colonial School District students and residents has been, been really wonderful, and we appreciate that. Kathy, there has never been a doubt that during your time on the board, you have been thoughtful and conducted yourself with professionalism. Even when you had a different perspective on an issue, you stuck to your guns and expressed your viewpoint. You are a true independent, and will always have my respect and thanks for the time you have dedicated to this school district. And finally, Beth, it's going to be very hard to express what your value to Colonial School District has been and what you have meant to me personally. We had a really, really rocky start eight years ago, a few people were around for it, but, but it was tough, and never did I dream that you would become one of my closest friends. You have put your heart and soul into your position as a board member, committee chair and vice president, and have played a great part in the progress Colonial School District has made. I have relied on you to bounce things off of, and know that the decisions we came to together were far better than any of those I could have reached alone. Your impact on me and on Colonial School District as a whole will be felt for many years to come. Thank you for everything. All of you have left quite a legacy that makes it incumbent upon those of us who are remaining and those who will be joining us to keep looking forward and to continue to make enlightened personnel, curricular, and management decisions. Once again, thank you for the countless hours and your dedication to the Colonial School And are there any comments now?
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. To say that when we came on, we had a rocky start is really an understatement.
I never yell, I yell.
And the fact that we're starting and ending with Gary, I think is fun, and I'm glad that you came on at the end, although I miss my buddy Alan. I just, you know, I've been thinking about this for this last week, it's a little crazy. When I started, my son, this all came about because he was in kindergarten.
Now she's going to cry.
No, I'm not, and I was bored, and I'd started with a conversation at a bus stop saying, "I think I'm going to have to go back to work," and my really good friend, who's now the secretary of the Department of Transportation for Pennsylvania, Wesley Richards, said to me, "You know, they're looking for people to run for school board, what do you think?" And I thought it was just an extension of PTO, which I was really involved in, and it is so, so much more than that, so much more than that, although that takes a lot of work as well. And anybody who puts theirself out there, running a political campaign is something I never thought I would ever do, something I never want to do again, but it was, it was quite a learning and a lesson, and, you know, you can run and you can do that, but when you come into this room, as both of you have so elegantly put it, it's about the kids and it's about the community, and I thank anybody who wants to do this job, it's a lot of work, and I think the only advice I would give to anybody who's considering it is you'll never regret it, it's an amazing thing to be part of your community this way, but also to remember that who you're doing the work for, and that's why you're here, and to just always keep that in mind, and thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or statement or question, anything for the administration? Okay, seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.